To order, a reminder that we sent out a message that we will not be holding executive session this evening. For folks who may not get the message in future, please do sign up with the board information email list. Make sure that we can give people as much information as we possibly can. And with that being said, we'll begin with our agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Joe?
If it pleases everyone, I would like to see us move anyone who's here for a particular reason forward.
Yes, the person that that's going to impact the most would be Tim.
Okay.
Luke from the city. I did have a conversation and offered an apology. It's a short agenda, and so there's really not much where to move other than that. And so I would humbly recommend if Tim has patience for us, just to keep the agenda as is, if that's.
I appreciate the thought, but I said we can tell you it's good.
Jill, that's a great point, and that's something that we'll be reviewing at the policy committee.
Okay.
Next Tuesday on November first, is to have a conversation about the flexibility to move, to make sure people aren't sitting for an entire board meeting. So thank you for that. We'll take any recommendations that other committee members may have about our agenda as well. Any other additional potential modifications to the agenda? Fantastic, we will keep it moving. We will move on to item three point one, which is public comment. Trish, I believe that no one has signed up, is that correct? Is there anybody here and everyone is affiliated or giving a presentation? Fantastic, okay, hearing none, we will continue to move on and we will jump right into student reps. Good to see you, good folks.
Students are enjoying the lovely fall weather. Open House was a huge success. Many clubs such as the Tatler, Dev Team, Science Olympia, TSA, and Asian American and Allies Club all attended the club there at Open House. During Open House last Thursday, guardians got to go through a day's schedule of their students. Each class lasted seven minutes and guardians got to see their students' teachers and get an overview of the class. The bell schedule was made mini and guardians got to see what their students' day looks like.
Our combined collage concert is tomorrow evening in Colpe Auditorium. The IHS Concert Band, Women's Ensemble String Orchestra, Chamber Orchestra, and Choral Ensembles are all performing. It'd be amazing if our board members and admin could come and watch our talented students. Last Wednesday was also the EDD Cardboard Boat Regatta, which took place in our new IHS pool. Our students had to build a contraption all out of cardboard and duct tape to go across and back our swim pool. And I actually participated in this and it was a blast for the people testing out their boats and for the spectators. Many students and teachers came to watch and cheer for their friends.
And an ongoing trend that we have been seeing since the beginning of October is that many students and teachers are sick. And even in late September, the board meeting was canceled due to illness and these situations can also be seen in our school. So students are worried about missing classes and have been coming into school sick and sometimes still positive for COVID. This is something that we will delve into more with Mr. Tremble and the admin team in the coverage case.
We are continuing to meet with Mr. Tremble and we thank Mr. Bryman for joining us today to talk about the bathrooms. We are glad that some minor fixes are being made before the capital project. And if there are any updates about the mental health days that we talked about last board meeting, it'd be great to hear those too.
The volleyball team and tennis team were stacked champions and section four champions. The boys and girls soccer, swimming, cross-country football cheerleading and cheerleading is still going on. As a matter of fact, swimming is having their meet right now and soccer, the boys varsity soccer will be playing at seven.
And McCundon, our other board rep, is unable to join us today.
Thank you, thank you very much. I leave that to all our student reps. Board responses?
Tomorrow night's concert is on my calendar and I have invited my dear spouse to join me. She has shown enthusiasm for this because he enjoys music and seeing talented students.
It'd be hard to say yes.
And, um, oh, and there will be a report on the bathrooms later tonight.
Yeah.
Who did you say gracious sponsored? The cardboard boat, right? Or who organized it or?
Oh, Mr. Crywee, our EDD tech teacher, yeah.
Oh, I see, okay. I would have loved to see that, see what EDD is.
Oh, uh, that's near design and development class, yeah. And I think there should be pictures, because there's a lot of photographers there.
I have videos.
Mirror.
Same song.
Please do share.
And it's also so exciting when there's water in the pool.
Yes, right.
That has been years.
Yeah, I was going to speak to that and just thank folks in the room, particularly Amanda Urbah, for the longstanding work of trying to get our pool and working order and to even be usable in competition. It was no small task and as we said, we've been waiting for variety of issues, supply chain issues, some elements that did not work as we thought, so it is great to hear. And I did miss the mid, I can ask Pat as well, but what time for the concert will I be arriving at Ithaca High School tomorrow?
It's like start at?
Seven.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. It goes to about eleven thirty? Fantastic, thank you.
It's on my calendar as well. I'll try to sit far away from my colleagues so they don't think we're bunching up.
Any additional board comments? Fantastic, thank you all very much. We will leave it to Dr. Brown to talk about the bathrooms and mental health days. That may be still a meeting away, but we'll follow up during the superintendent's report. We will move to the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Chris Malcolm, seconded by Pat Wazalu. Any questions, comments, anything that we need to know about from finance?
It was actually uneventful treasures report for August is in there, regular monthly transfers. No, nothing exciting this one.
I'll just, I'll just, I'll probably just add this. Really, a robust conversation about lunch?
Yeah.
And, um.
That is on the agenda for the facilities, the finance update later today.
Oh, then what was this?
This is just a consent.
I mean, how? Just the consent agenda.
Got it. My, Chris has got it all under control.
Yep.
Some days. The only thing I will note, anything on the consent agenda, especially the treasures report. Emily does an awesome job just summarizing and brief what the transfers are, why, you know, funds may be lower or higher in a given month, seasonality shifts, things like that. So please dig in and you can see that it gives a great explanation. You can follow it month to month, which is extremely helpful.
Fantastic, fantastic. Well, if there are no other questions or comments about the consent agenda, we'll call the question. All in favor? That's everyone who's present. Aaron, I don't know if your participant can hear us, if you want to vote on the consent agenda?
Oh, I, yes, I say yes, I can hear you. Hi.
Thanks, Erin, thanks for joining us. So it's unanimous and Karen here would not be joining us today. Uh, that moves us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown?
Yeah, I appreciate the invitation, Professor. I'm going to be inviting several colleagues to speak to the bathroom, professional development, and a bit about the mental health days in a second. But quickly wanted to note, at complication this past year, the last complication, it was so good to be back in person with folks. And I had the great honor of recognizing Paul Alexander for forty-five years of service to this school district and community. It was a special moment for our school community to have someone who was getting that forty-five year type of recognition. And we all cheered and clapped. I spoke to how Paul knows everything about this school district, including the things we don't want people to know, all right? Because he's an archivist, he's been around, he's done pretty much every job in this school that you can think of, except for super. He would always say to me, the only job I don't want to do is the superintendent's job. He has been a custodian. He had been a union president for a while. He's worked closely with every person in this school district one way or the other. Unfortunately, I think folks may know about this at this point, but I wanted to make sure we put his name into this space and recognize him. But Paul passed away. On Saturday, there will be a celebration of his life and I want to blank one, I think it's at ten AM. At St. Catherine's, am I correcting? St. Catherine's at ten AM. So just a note to the community, to spend some time recognizing and appreciating an amazing person who has served our school community for many, many years and my thoughts and prayers to his family. And there's no easy transition from that, but it's something I've been grappling with for the last week, trying to transition from thinking about Paul to work. But Paul would want us to, yeah, there it is. Paul wants to talk about bathrooms now. Right. So with that, I will be inviting, and that's with all respect to Paul. Because I think we're finally getting somewhere, thanks to Paul and now Dr. Bryman, who Paul trained very well to have his conversations. So Mr. Bryman, as a follow-up to I don't people from your last session.
Yeah, and it was great talking to the students today. I hope everybody has a handout in front of them. I just want to provide a brief update because this came up in the last meeting about bathrooms. But you know, I would say first and foremost, I C S D facilities were committed to making sure that our bathrooms are our priority, of course. And we will be making a transition in the capital project shortly in February as well. But some of the things we did over the summer, we installed it, we installed heavy-duty fixtures for the sinks. There were, I'm sure you remember, there were some questions about the water flow in the sinks and we installed different faucets that increased the water flow. We've made, we've made sure that all the locks are working and operating. We did some painting in the summer. We did painting on the ceiling, we painted some doors as well. And then we have some things that are in progress right now. We are replacing soap dispensers, paper towel dispensers. We're looking at graffiti removal and of course, broken towels as well. And I would say that some of the things we're really prioritizing on is making sure that our custodians are checking bathroom conditions three times a day, looking for trash, looking for cleanliness. We're also partnering, of course, with the admin team as well, who are increasing their supervision in the G N H bathrooms. And then, I don't know if you remember last year, last year we had some concerns about the cleanliness in the bathrooms. So we worked with Servpro to kind of get to a baseline clean in a lot of our bathrooms. And you know, that could be something we look at again, of course. And then today I had a great conversation with students about how we can work together to kind of curb any vandalism efforts that are happening in the bathroom. And Grace had a wonderful idea about increasing some awareness by sharing this flyer with the students. And you know, we could also set up a meeting to invite students to talk about some of the things that we're doing. So we're really excited about the capital project work that's coming up. That's starting, so all the bathrooms in G N H will become gender-inclusive bathrooms. There's going to be pre-abatement demolition. It's going to start, obviously, we're not going to do it all once. H is going to start on February thirteenth and then G is going to start on the first week of April. So that's, that's the update we have for the bathrooms right now. Well, you know, we're committed to increasing all our efforts and up until when the capital project work starts. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, okay.
Those two breaks you just told us about, February and April, are those students vacation? Are those?
Yes, yeah.
Because I know abatement is scary stuff.
That's correct. No, good, no, that's exactly right. It looks like when I looked in the calendar and I know the capital project team, you know, with Amanda has done a great job on scheduling them around the breaks, starting around those. Yep.
Second question is, all right, so we've all been in high school, ended the first week in high school. All the things we fix can be in disarray and multiple locations.
Sure.
Is there priority lists that we sort of try to hand our custodians about? Is it, you know what I'm saying?
You mean in terms of if things are broken in the bathrooms?
Yeah, so let's say we got seven bathrooms in high school and three have dispensers and four have stall doors and three toilets.
Yeah.
Do they have a list of prioritization so the kids can have some expectation of sort of students, learners, excuse me?
Yeah.
Can have expectations around what's going to be fixed in what quarter?
Um, you know, I don't know if we have those lists. I can tell you, obviously, we're looking at soap dispensers. We're looking at paper towel dispensers, some other basics. But I can, I can check in with our custodial team and see what that list looks like and I can get back to you on that. Yeah, it's a good idea.
I think it's helpful for all of us because toilet needs fixing, maybe that's not so easy, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe it's a supply issue, we don't know, but it'd be really good to have a sense of what's prioritizable, if that makes sense?
Sure, sure, sure. We can, we can get that to you.
Hey, Brown?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I thought, without the question. Cool.
All right, okay. Thanks, thanks, guys.
That's cool.
Thank you all for having me. I'll start with mental health update. Does this sound good? So as far as what is, the state requires as excused and unexcused absences, that's a district decision. And our attendance policy, which you probably, I looked it up, my gosh. You might know the exact number, the five thousand series. A list is written fairly vaguely to encompass illnesses, medical appointments,
I won't count the numbers, I guess.
career visits, college visits. So what I would like to propose as a next step is to have a meeting and hear from our students. They could come over to the high school and hear more about what you're proposing. And then we could make a recommendation for policy. As far as looking at our current attendance policy, unexcused absences includes driver's tests.
Yeah.
That was some learning for me. So I would propose that as a, as a next step.
Sounds good, yeah.
Real quick, about October the twenty-first?
Oh, yes, yeah. October twenty-first, we had the privilege of getting to come to gather as educators. And we had a number of activities happening in the elementary buildings. So we had an update on learning mats where educators were sharing out the scope and sequence for elementary, elementary learning by grade level. Each elementary building hosted a grade level, so all fifth grade teachers, for example, went to northeast together for the morning. And then we had four buildings participating in Dr. Holliday's instructional coaching cycles. And Dr. Janita Wellmans came to Colpe Auditorium to give an overview from eleven to two. We also had department leaders, each at the secondary level and at the elementary level, building administrators engaged in conversations with educators about what was at the top of their, their list and their priority to gather around. And so department leaders met, all secondary department leaders. We had schools looking at ruler resources and taking curiosity voyage into what lessons and resources are available there. That's a brief overview.
Thank you, Miss Gill. That's all we can have, an update tonight?
Well, to follow up just to our students, the policy is, as I just found quickly, fifty-one sixty. And it was last modified in two thousand and ten. So it is without question ready for a review, especially given the changing times, right? That a lot can happen in a decade and here we are finding ourselves in that situation. So please invite me to that meeting as well, because I would help, I would love to help rewrite that policy in a way that's much more affirming. And in a way that will most likely make it sway into our new code of conduct, which we'll, we'll talk about later. I'm going to take the unusual precedent of also reiterating what Dr. Brown said about Paul Alexander and realizing that there is no smooth transition and sometimes, I think I said it last time, silence and just sitting is a really powerful idea. But I feel compelled to share a story. When I was doing my dissertation research and doing research specifically on the Ithaca City School District, that's when I first met Paul Alexander, who brought me up to Danby and went through the archives with me for hours and hours on end as I was trying to research the beginning of the private school district, the Ithaca Academy, which began in eighteen twenty-five, and the public school district, which began in eighteen seventy-five. And showing me minutes of board meetings, showing me yearbooks, showing me different awards that people had won. And so my first introduction to Paul was on a much more personal level of just meeting someone who knew so much about this school district. So this is a loss of great magnitude, not just what Paul's provided for the school district, of course, to his friends and family. And also probably one of the most knowledgeable historians we had in our community of our school district. So I also want to acknowledge Paul and his family and his community, what he's done for us. So thank you, Paul. We appreciate it.
Yes, that's a tough loss. I've had to work with Paul for years in another life. I had the pleasure of managing the removal of asbestos all around this community. And in this district as well, it wasn't a conflict, somebody else saved me. Who better to make sure all of it is removed? It's tremendously detailed, tedious work, extremely dangerous. And I was always amazed at how Paul stayed on top of it. As far as record keeping involved in that is, is extraordinary. And this is an old district, old buildings that Paul was on top of. Not just what had happened in the past, where we're going and trying to schedule our progress that needed to be accomplished in the, in the future. Point where every single part of these buildings was built with asbestos, the tiles, pipe fittings, the window cockings, the roof tiles, all of it, all of it. It's a nightmare and we owe a lot to Paul for working through that. So his saying, his friends and his family, it was one of the new the archivists, and rest in peace to Paul, I would say.
And I'll let the community know that Dr. Brown and I are in conversation about how best to recognize the achievement and honor the legacy. So please stay aware, will we clean up about what will happen, what will happen next. So thank you, Dr. Brown. Our next agenda item is a special presentation. We've asked two folks to join us about special education. This has been a long time coming. We are delighted that you'd be here to join us and so please feel free and look forward to the presentation. Thank you all for being here. We can move those desks closer up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I have the privilege of serving as Mrs. Superintendent of Inclusion and working alongside Jennifer Pacheco. And tonight, we're going to start with a small framing of inclusion as our vision and mindset in this district and some of the staffing moves and the language and professional development to make that a reality and how that is evolving.
Next slide. Thanks, Tricia. So we wanted to start out with setting the stage with a fairly popular, we'll say comic that is well-known in the field of special education from Michael Jean Greco, who's an educator up at U B M. He, he created these to kind of center some issues around special education. This one in particular, we wanted to start with because it illustrates the elements of universal design through the lens of architecture, which led to the creation of Universal Design for Learning, which is a structure for curriculum development and structural practices that happen in the classroom. And really, the takeaway is access for all students. And that is the lens that we want to start our presentation with today.
Next slide, Tricia. We also want to offer gratitude and appreciation as Dr. Brown often talks about thanking our students for being here. We want to start with thanking the community for the support. In the last year, two years, we've increased special education positions, eleven positions for teachers, fourteen positions for educational support professionals. Social worker increase has been five and a half positions. And speech and occupational therapy has also been increased by about a one point oh F T E. So we want to thank you for supporting the, the increased resources to have more teachers. We want to thank educators who've been really innovative and flexible at a time when it's hot, very challenging to hire teachers, special education teachers, aides and TAs in this field. They have been exceptionally flexible. And to caregivers who have been very gracious with us as we navigate coming in and out the challenges COVID has presented. And then lastly, students as partners and leaders. So at curriculum committee, Eldred mentioned a student panel giving feedback as part of your educator orientation and the importance of that. And students offering countless, countless opportunities, or I should say time, to say this isn't working for me and this is why. And that's been invaluable. Next slide, Tricia.
We're going to start with talking about some ways that we're building relationships within special education and three, three in particular. The first one's relationships with students. So one presentation, I think it was pre-pandemic, you might remember. We came and talked about the Student Let I E P and five oh four process, which was a pilot in that, that two thousand nineteen, twenty year. And, and something that we've continued to want to, to bring back and are having a revival this year in that process. So that's something that we're really excited about because that means bringing students to the, to the table, whether that be the actual table or virtual table, but having them be part of their development of an individualized education plan or a five oh four plan. So hearing student voice centered what works for them, what doesn't work for them, what accommodations they might need to be successful and having them as partners when we're developing plans, not for students, but with students. The second one is relationships with our educators and our teams. So you'll see the three-to-one related service model is something that I spoke about in the finance committee last year as a pilot that's been successful. And we are rolling that out to more schools. What that means is that three-to-one means there's three direct service sessions to one indirect service session. Meaning if you get speech therapy twice a week, three, three of those weeks, you're getting it directly. And on that off week, the one week, it's a consultation to your team, to the general education teacher, the support professionals. And what we've seen is that because there's more collaboration happening around the team, more team members knowing what those O T goals, occupational therapy or speech therapy goals are, students are making faster and better progress. So that's really enhancing that collaboration amongst team members. The other thing that we see is integrated co-teaching. We have that model at kindergarten through eighth grade right now. And, and that's led to some of those increases in staffing, as we try to have co-taught math sections at the middle school level. And we're seeing that collaboration amongst general education, special education teachers and other educators that are, are co-teaching with our staff. And then the last one is relationships with families. And I wanted to highlight our educators for inclusion, who have been a role that really is working on building that relationship with our caregivers that are coming into the schools for the first time this year and was, were maintaining those relationships. So they are able to, you know, be the point person around specifically special education topics and needs at this school. They know the student, they know the team, they know the teachers, they know the I E Ps or five oh four as well. So those are different relationships that we're building and the ways in which we're increasing our relationship building at the, at those levels.
So what do we wish to grow and what are the growing edges? We want to fully acknowledge the ways in which we need to improve. We can always do more. One of those centering, that one piece of feedback that is centered is the need to onboard educational support professionals, aides and TAs. is the need to onboard educational support professionals, aides and TAs, regularly to provide sustained training, how do you read an individual education plan? What are some strategies for de-escalating situations? And so I want to give a shout out to Kat Nichols, who's been facilitating those almost two years now. So as we interview on Fridays, we have interviewing every Friday, onboarding every Thursday, those sessions occur for staff.
Another, um, way that we've been, you know, working on our growing edges is through some pilots, so I wanted to highlight a few of those. We have, uh, started a supervision process for our licensed clinical social workers. So we have many licensed master social workers that are in the, the district that would like to pursue their clinical license. And part of that work is, is working under the direction of a, a clinical social worker. One of the benefits of that is really again collaboration because they're working in small teams and talking about cases and sharing interventions and strategies. A bonus on that is that, you know, as a special education department, we can bill Medicaid to get some money back for anyone that is, uh, receiving a psychological counseling service under a licensed clinical social worker or a licensed master social worker that's being supervised by a clinical social worker. We also started by growing two new inclusion, inclusive program consultant positions, which are two of our ITA members that are working towards their ECDA, which is their Board Certified Behavior Analyst Certificate. So, um, one way that we have been looking at providing more, uh, data-driven and behavioral support in collaboration with, uh, the inclusive focus that we have. So how do we support students that need a little bit more direct, um, behavioral support within the context of their general education classroom? And so those folks are also being supervised and are going through that process and working with a small pilot of students in different schools. And then the last one, which we're also really excited about, is growing our collaboration with, uh, the PINE, which is our program for inclusivity and neurodiversity education out of NYU. Lauren Huff is the consultant from that, uh, program. And we had a pilot of four schools last year. Then we chose the schools that had the most students that were classified with autism. It went really well, and this year we're excited that all eight of our elementary schools are considered PINE schools. And so they have an opportunity to go through professional development, um, and also get consults with, uh, the staff from NYU.
Two more pieces. We've gotten feedback from caregivers on being more proactive about documenting missed sessions. So if my child misses an occupational therapy session or a speech session, so we have new ways of utilizing the current system to, um, get that data. So again, we're being proactive in notifying them about that missed session. And then also, we also want to acknowledge there are areas of growth that we're not even aware of yet. And so having an inclusion committee, an ICSD committee look at that, that invites the students, caregivers, and staff to tell us what they need, will be, um, coming, coming to you this November, um, once a month for the school year.
Thanks, Tricia. Thanks, Tricia. And, um, next slide. That one, thank you. Are, it's just highlighting some of the professional development that we're working on. Right now, specific to special education, they run three series. So there's usually a fall, winter, and spring the past two years. These are just sample flyers and they're LinkedIn hairs if you want to look at the full flyer. You come through the presentation. So the middle one is highlighting the Effective Support in Inclusive Classrooms, which is a ten-week series that I do alongside our educators for inclusion for any of our new, uh, new or we've had money returning, ESPs that have joined and, and, uh, benefited from having coaching and topics of, of support. We also have just PD that is specific for our new special education staff, because we do have many new staff with us and also veteran staff. And those are, um, just collaboratively developed based on what the feedback is from the teams and educators that they feel like they want and/or we're seeing trends that we feel like, um, we should offer.
So I wanted to take a moment, specific to your roles on the board, when you have the approval, the Community on Special Education report weekly. There is Karen, uh, I thank her for asking the question, what is amendment no meeting? That's one term in your glossary of terms that's left out. So we'll update that glossary of terms. But amendment no meaning, meaning that a parent can request, uh, and, and support a change on an IEP without a meeting. It typically goes to a least restrictive service. And then the requested review is when a parent asks for this community, for the Community on Special Education to reconvene or a team or, uh, a staff member. Then integrated service, meaning inside the classroom setting, non-integrated being outside of the general education setting. So we'll update those terms. Thanks to Karen for being a close reader and catching that. What questions do you have for us?
Four colleagues' questions.
Really excited about this, um, continued movement towards, uh, student participation. First one, I think you put up there was, uh, student development IEPs. And, uh, I'm curious about whether or not that school experiment has started already. And what's the scope of what's taking place so far? And how do we, how do we learn how to measure that and think about it?
That's a great question. So we started with a pilot. I think we had around fifteen educators in that twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year that worked, uh, to choose a handful of students, um, I think it was under five students, though many, had many more. Right now, our, many of our high school students are already participating in their meetings, but this really is looking at having kids as young as kindergarten participate in some way, even as just doing like an all-about-me presentation of like, this is me and this is what I'm about and this is what I like. All the way through, students that are actually directing their meetings. So we started that, then pandemic, so we had kind of pushed pause and we lost a little bit of that momentum. So this year, we're starting again, um, asking educators that are excited about this work if they'd like to pick a few pilot students. Usually they're students that have an annual review meeting coming up, so not, not necessarily the first time they're being classified with an IEP. Those are generally the, the meetings that we're starting with. There's also training that's happening at our regional level. So we're, we, you know, in that, those PD flyers, you'll see that there's some training that we're sending folks to, um, to continue. There's a, a sort of a guiding text and how do you set up meetings? And also how do you gather the information to prepare the student for the meeting? So there's a lot of self-advocacy work and self-determination work that needs to be done with the student because it's a process. It's not just about the meeting. It's about students saying, I know myself, I know my goals, I know what I need to work on. And that all has to happen, you know, kind of up to the meeting, when they presented the meeting, then you go away from that IEP or 504 meeting. And the student still needs to note that this is the goals that they're working on and how are they involved in that process? It might be helping collect data, it might be having conferences. But a lot of this work came out of those student-led parent-teacher conferences and has moved into the realm of special education. So same similar process, but, um, just a little different lens on it.
There are many, many years of data on students in IEP meetings in this district that could be easily mined, and I think would provide an interesting baseline.
Yes, yes. I have, I've done a little bit of digging, especially when we first started to see, uh, patterns of, of students. So, um, when we had that first year, we did see an increase, um, which obviously we had a sort of artificial increase because everyone was choosing those. And we'll say with the pandemic, we've seen a, a decrease in some students attending. And we've seen an increase in parents attending through the virtual format, which has been nice. What we tend to see is actually happening is the students being invited in, even if it is a virtual meeting and sitting with their educator for inclusion and their, their case manager or teacher at the table. And then, um, the parent is often joining by video conference, not all the time.
What, what I'm saying is I, I believe that there, it would be fairly easy to look back through minutes of meetings, of which I participated in thousands.
Yes.
No exaggeration sadly, um, but I, I would be curious about what the, you know, if.
What the numbers that.
I, I really would. I'd like to know what percentage. I know we did it. You know, there was some evident flow. There were times when we did a lot of it in one school and not so much of it in others. And, and it changed whether it was at a school-based CSE or a district CSE. But, um, yeah, that would be of, of interest to me.
I can work on that. We can export that from frontline, actually.
There we go.
Yep, in a backlog way, yes.
Yeah.
Jill, are you also inferring that, um, or maybe there is no inference, but that it, that was a positive move forward to have students participate in CSE meetings? I'm just trying to understand as well. Just trying to see what the numbers are.
From my perspective, it always ha, it always went on. I mean, this, from my perspective, this is a change. The change here would be to say, um, that you're measuring it and identifying it as, as, as a need, but it's, it's in, it's in state law, it's in the New York state law that they, that they should attend. And I know in, in the past, they often did, whether it was simply, here's a pre-K student, everybody meet this guy and he waves and then out. Or whether it's a, a high school, they're pretty much determining whether they want the services or not.
Other, Chris?
You mentioned, and I'm not going to get the term right, an, an inclusion panel or a committee. And you said, getting that on board, what, what would that look like in your vision? And about how long would it take to get that started?
Well, I'll, this is something that Erin, Jen and I have been, had been meeting, um, and talking about a need for it, given the last time we had an, an inclusion plan was over a decade ago. When we revisited that plan and have accomplished, uh, what that plan set out to do. So now where are the needs based on putting that into place? And we'd like to have different times of day. For example, to, to launch, um, in November and have an eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty slot so that we could invite students during their lunch to participate in this virtual meeting. As well as, um, um, the, the draft schedule is staggered early morning to accommodate secondary staff who may be able to hop on before their workday. Or two fifteen to three fifteen, we have a slot there, uh, to invite elementary staff to come. They don't have a prep at, you know, at eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty. We just want to open up the access to, to the meeting to look at where are, where are we with inclusive teaching practices? Where are the needs?
Sort of an audit or an assessment of where it is at this point?
I believe, yeah, absolutely. I'd classify it as an audit and assessment. And Jen and Erin, whatever, please add.
You know, I'd, I'd like to add too, um, there's a, there's a level of privilege that comes from parents who are able to participate in a, in a, in a big level. Myself being one of those parents. And so one of the visions of this committee is to give voice and actively seek out families that are unable to speak up and students that aren't, that don't have those big voices. And we really want to hear from as many people as possible instead of the same people that we hear from over and over. So we wanted to establish this committee to, to provide that space to understand issues that we're facing, that we're maybe not hearing about in, in the venues that we have. Um, and this committee will allow for that. It'll allow for growth. It'll allow for, for expanding on the vision of inclusion. I mean, inclusion at the level that ICSD does it is rare and it takes work and it takes innovation and it takes collaboration. And I think this committee will allow for more collaboration.
Thank you.
Another question, but a comment. Dr. Brown has done an extraordinary job, my time on the board, bringing young people to speak to us at consultations and other special events, who at a time would have been considered non-communal at all, but they've given them tools, given them ways to express themselves. Impact on the people saw that is life changing. But I'd like to, uh, hear more often what's happening with those babies, right, with that population. Can we get them to come and present to the board? We know they're finding their voices. I don't want to just see that on special occasions.
Any other comments or questions for? Um, I'll just add from the little bit of information that I received that I greatly appreciate the approach to be problem-solving based. Often, we can continue to talk about everything that is not working well and that is, I believe, as Erin communicated, that is a necessity. And the real goal is to fix it, is to try to increase the, um, experience of folks. So I just really appreciate approaching this work in that way. How can we improve what we're doing? So that, that's extremely helpful. And to that, the one question I do have is, as Erin said, we often do hear, um, from a number of families, who are not having the most positive experiences. But we don't hear from other families who may be experiencing similar difficulties or disruption in services or, um, whatever the issue may be. And, um, recommendations at this time, if that's the case, what should caregivers do moving forward if they have questions? If they want to know more, and it may not be the families that we hear from always, right? So I'm just.
Absolutely. So I, on our webpage, there is the contact information for every building's educator for inclusion. So that would be the, the administrator who knows the teaching team and would have some insights and be well-placed just to grow that relationship with the family so that we can do better. And then, of course, uh, Jen and I are always welcome conversations.
So that is Mary Grover.
Mary Don Grover.
Fantastic.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you both again. Greatly appreciated.
Appreciate it.
Great, great. Uh, this will move us to, uh, our next agenda item, which are, uh, reports and updates from our committees. The board will continue. In addition to, um, some, uh, regular summaries of our committees, we will make sure that we have, uh, committee updates at our board meetings. Tonight will be from finance and facilities and will begin, um, I believe Mr. Malcolm is the chair of the facility, of the finance committee.
Yes, freshly, uh, voted in.
By a claim.
So, Mr. Malcolm, um, a quick update of our last finance committee meeting?
Um, well, I'll, I'll put the September and October. September, we went, Amanda actually did a great job, uh, just going over budget, budget development overview, what goes into the budget, breaking down the budget, the, um, you know, revenue side, the expense side, how it works, where we're at this, um, in this timeframe within the school year, what we're coming from with, you know, tax bills being received, all those different things, um, and expenditures. So fast forward to the October one, we had a robust discussion, um, and I, I need to, actually, can we back up the segue? During the September meeting, we also reviewed, uh, school lunch fees and the school lunch program. And we made the decision not to increase school lunch fees because those did come up off of COVID, um, which was when they were frozen and now they were being, um, became live again. And, uh, to your credit, Dr. Bradwell, we had a conversation about, um, not even starting up school fees and if there's any potential freezing them, and you shared along the article with Saratoga Springs, eliminating school lunch fees for students, and we were asking, how could we do that? And that's brought us to the October meeting, where, to our fabulous team, Amanda and her folks, who did, you know, endless research to try to get us there, to find a way to say yes, um, which we're still navigating, but really understanding the federal side because we do get state money and different money for, um, school meal programs. And we have to navigate, of course, there's always. And we have to navigate, of course, there's always a legal aspect of that, and is it a gift of um school district funds? And we are currently working on that, and we, you know, did this with the understanding of real world, um, expenses, you know. My take and my thought process on this, if you look anywhere, um, NICE fees are up, gas prices are up, food prices are up. And now you're going back and you weren't paying for school lunch, and if you have two or more children buying breakfast and lunch, you are now getting hit with a two hundred plus dollar a month bill. You know, let's be realistic, that's a huge expense, um, and how do we navigate that and and really work for our, you know, our taxpayers? So there's ongoing conversation with that, Eldred and Erin folks, you know, who are part of that. Uh, that was really the crux of our last meeting, and how can we best serve um the students and their families? But also, and also give option for folks who didn't need it or wasn't, you know, anything to them, how do we make sure they have the option to pay if they wanna pay? Yeah, Eldred, did I do that justice?
That was, I got nothing, and that was, that was well done.
Fantastic.
Thank you, now remind folks that both of those videos, both those meetings are available via video as well for folks to thoroughly engage the entire meeting as well, so thank you, Mr. Malcolm. Dr. Tripp, facilities.
Yes, facilities just keeps chugging along. Um, and that's why I love facilities. It's uh each time we meet, um, whether that's in in one case out on a tour of um. The capital projects progress or at a regular scheduled meeting or a meeting with the finance committee. Um, you see a lot is happening, these people come in and give reports on on various aspects of what's going on. We learned a lot this last meeting, um, about the electric buses. And are hope to have, um, at least two of them going to the voters in May, and then plans for more. We should know at the end of October, I believe, that we will be having, what kinds of grant money we'll be getting, I'll be optimistic here. A a number of grants have been applied for, and um I suspect we'll do quite well in that. So one of the things that will be happening is that um, the the people who build these e-buses have offered to come in. Let us have a tour and go for a ride, so we'll try to, Amanda's going to work on that and try to arrange it at a time when any of us who are interested can participate. So that's something exciting that's going on that that Dan talked with us about at the last meeting. Otherwise, um, it just, as I said, it just goes on, phase one, phase two, um, plans for phase three. And and everything um seems to be going according to plan, and again, along with everyone else, um. Paul Alexander is missed every day in many ways in the district, and certainly facilities is a major, a major part of that, so um. It's a sad loss, and uh it's kind of odd to be sitting places without Paul, particularly in this arena. It will continue on.
Thank you, Dr. Tripp. Our next update uh is from our vice president, Moira Lang, who gave um infinite hours to participate in the New York State School Board Association. Delegation of legislation, so.
Right, so.
The business meeting, and I was, I was voluntarily told to do this, no, I volunteered and uh everybody was very happy to volunteer.
The business.
Um, so uh just, every year, New York State School Boards Association has a what they call a business meeting. Uh, it used to, for as long as I know, uh, be part of the convention. Uh, but during COVID, it shifted to a virtual meeting, and they discovered the advantages of keeping as a virtual meeting. So that's what it was this year, and it was held on October seventeenth, and it lasted four hours. Um, and what what happens at this meeting is that over the course of uh months, over the course of the year. Member districts, members of New York State School Boards Association submit re- resolutions where they recommend that NISBA pursue advocacy. On various educational issues. Um, and then there's a NISBA Resolutions Committee that reviews all of these proposals. Um, and they decide which ones they are going to endorse or support. Uh, and then during the meeting, each resolution, which also includes the one that the committee have not put their support, um, have not given their support. All of the resolutions, and in this case, we had forty-three resolutions, are uh are moved and seconded. Um, and then many of them, but not all, are debated. Um, and then all of them are ultimately voted on by the voting delegates. Um, and each member district can have a voting delegate, and that's what I was. Um, so, uh, yeah, the ones that were of particular interest to me, to us, I think. Were a number of uh resolutions uh supporting legislative changes that would align certain legal requirements. For small skit city school districts, of which we are one, uh, with other kinds of school districts in the state. And there are, I think, four different kinds of school districts in the state. Um, and so there are a number of things, including um certain aspects of the election process. Uh, certain dates by which a school district has to do something, where small city school districts have different requirements. Than other kinds of school districts, which provides confusion. Um, so this resolution passed, I think, you know, with with unanimous support, I think, and um and without real discussion. Uh, but I I anticipate it could help us and other small city school districts um to avoid some of the confusion. Uh, that arises from these differing requirements. And I would say one of the most interesting uh resolution uh was uh a resolution to have NISBA support legislation. To allow school board members to receive a stipend for their service. Uh, and this is something that was recently brought up by Erin, um, in a meeting of ours. Um, I was not aware until this meeting that in fact it is not permitted for board members to be stipended. Um, and so this resolution was asking NISBA to support legislation that would allow board members to be stipended. And this engendered a lot of debate. Uh, ultimately, this failed as a resolution. Um, the the cons, uh, the people who spoke against it, uh, spoke that on points such as that. Pay should not be a motivation for school board service. Uh, a number of people spoke about the ways in which being able to say, we are volunteers, we are getting nothing for this. Provides a certain kind of protection when we are accosted in the grocery store. Um, or at a board meeting, um, and our motives are questioned um for why we're doing what we're doing. Um, so there was a lot of that. Uh, the pro is something that we heard when Erin proposed this, and it was part of the the written rationale for this proposal. Uh, that it would allow for greater diversity on school boards, that it would allow uh people with with childcare responsibilities. Or elder care responsibilities or transportation uh limitations. Uh, to have a a better chance of being able to serve on the school board. Um, and other people spoke, and this is ultimately what uh what led me to vote in favor of this resolution. But again, it failed, um, was that it would be, this would not mandate stipends. It would be up to an individual board to decide if they wanted to do it, under what parameters, in what amount. Uh, and then also individual board members could decide whether they wanted to accept or not. Um, so I did vote in favor on uh that basis, but it did fail. Um, and it was in fact news to me that uh under current law, uh, stipends are not permitted uh for school board members. Um, there were quite a few resolutions that were proposed and not recommended. Uh, they represented, um, they really illustrated the diversity of thought across this state on a variety of issues. Uh, and even some of the the uh proposals that were recommended by the Resolution Committee. Um, represented the fact that there's a lot of a wide variety of of thought on issues like religious exemption for vaccines. Um, single payer healthcare, uh, gun control, and finally curriculum. Particularly uh curriculum related to non-traditional subjects, which is some of the wording in some of the resolutions. That wanted to limit uh curricular forays into certain subjects, so. Oh, thank you, it was four hours, but it was really quite interesting.
Thank you very much, Moira, folks may or may not know that Ithaca College will be getting a brand-new major next year called Educational Studies. It'll be the first time that Ithaca College is gonna offer this as a major, and I will have to let people know, if you get a major, you can sit in four-hour-long. Meetings around educational policy, so uh thank you for your service, Moira, greatly appreciated. Um, we will continue with our agenda, um, up next is agenda item ten point one, a resolution for expenditures for mandatory finance training for our two newest board members. Uh, Dr. Tripp and Karen Yearwood, um, and we'll entertain any motions.
I will move uh ten point one, uh, motion to approve expenditures for Jill Tripp, Karen Yearwood, to attend the mandatory finance training for new board members.
Second.
Moved by Chris Malcolm, seconded by Elder Harris, any discussion, questions, conversation?
Enjoy. I'm going to Syracuse.
If there's no, if there's nothing else beyond the enticement of Syracuse, uh, we'll call the question all in favor. And that includes Erin, fantastic, thank you very much. Um, and we'll continue with our agenda item, up next is item ten point two, uh, the GIA, the Ithaca City School District and City of Ithaca. Possible land swap, uh, we are blessed that Tim Logue's been patient to stay with us. Uh, and uh, Tim, if you wanna come this way and help us understand uh what we're looking at, that'd be great. And by way of context, let me just say for background information, um, uh, Jill, myself, and Karen Yearwood were part of the facilities committee. We had um some of this presentation at a facilities committee that's available online. Um, we, all three of us also attended a uh special meeting between uh GIA and the BJM community, in which Tim was there to present. Um, and did some outreach and had some um very positive conversations with folks um at that committee. And so we invited Tim to give this presentation uh for at least a third time, if not more than that, to make sure, because now it will be up for a vote for the board. If that, if the board so chooses, so again, thank you very much for all your time, Tim.
Great, uh, Tim Logue, I'm the director of engineering for the Department of Labor for the city, and I don't know if online, I think Leslyn McLean-Cleabor is not able to join us. But Travis Brooks and Ronald Mack from GIA might have been looking to join.
If we have questions, we'll bring them on board.
So just so you know, they might, they might be in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, so uh as some of you know, uh, GIA and the city itself actually purchased the old gymnasium at the old Macka Conception building next door to GIA. Uh, with an intention of turning it into a teen center and new gym space for uh for GIA. They're busting at the seams for the teen program particularly, and looking for additional space. So um, we've been working with them and architects and engineers on an expansion project for the building. The the existing gymnasium inside the uh old Macka Conception Gym is not actually quite big enough to be a standard-sized basketball court, which was one of the important things. But there's also some classroom space and other programming space that GIA is looking to have in there. So we're looking to do an expansion on the east side of the building and on the south side of the building to provide that additional space. And um, as you know, there was a referendum in May that got put down in order to try to sell some land on the east side of the building to the city. And we've kind of reconfigured and come back to a different place where we think we can do a very similar project. Uh, but we need to swap an easement for utilities, so we still need to bring utilities in on the east side of the building in order to serve it, which would be on school district property. And we would then swap some space through the driveway that's next to the GIA building and um and then be able to proceed. So, uh, the slides are just some pictures and aerial photographs, so you might be very familiar with that. There's a view from Court Street with the old Macka Conception Gym on the right. The expansion, if you don't mind staying there for just a second, would take this wall that you're looking at next to the driveway and expand the building about the width of that driveway. There's a fence line just along the left side of that driveway, that's approximately the boundary between this, now the city's property, the school district property. It's not exactly, but it's very close to it, uh, so the building would come out to there, but there's a little bit of utility space that we would need on the left side of that fence. Thanks.
But Tim, I mean, clarification, you're, you know, what you're requesting is underground easement.
Correct, yeah.
We should emphasize that, because I think that's, for me, that was the main difference.
Right, so this, there's actually two pieces to this, one is a swap of underground easements that would allow us to put utilities underneath. Um, some of the green space at the BJM playgrounds, in the back, there's some raised garden beds, and some outdoor classroom space that happens there. Although the staff at their meeting told us that most of that's already been moved aside in preparation for uh what's happening uh at the GIA building. Um, the, we would need to dig that up in order to place utilities underground, like you said. We would also need a temporary easement during construction for construction purposes, so obviously we can't have the kids up close to the building construction site, we need to have some automatic space there. So the the permanent easement is underground, it's about ten feet wide, the temporary easement is about twenty feet wide to give us a little more space, so yes, thank you. Again, just a different perspective, you're looking at the main GIA building here on the left, trying to get a little better perspective of the of the playground space and the grassy space in the back. Uh, this was the original plan, so on the left side is Court Street. You can see the building footprint, the existing one, it's kind of a hatched-out space, the expansion is in the darker lines. And we were originally thinking about putting a sidewalk on the district's property just over that property line and having some entrances into the building from there. That's the plan that got scrapped, the next slide is the new plan. Thank you, so again, you can see the hatched-out is the existing building footprint, that shaded space around it would be the proposed expansion, there's a little bit on the front of the corners there. But the walkway now is on the far side of the building, which is the west side of the building. Um, there is still an entrance off of Court Street, but if there's a game on or something happening in the gym, you'd have to walk through the gym in order to get to the bleachers. And there's concession space and other lobby space in the back of the building, so there's an alternate way that we can have folks come into the building during a big event, whether it's a game or. Community event or whatever else might be happening in that space. And then there's maybe a little bit hard to read, there's four plans, I'm happy we can zoom in if you wanna see something specific, there's a fair amount of program space up front. Which Travis and Romel can speak to much better than I can, but there's printing, there's an audiovisual space, a recording studio, uh, a small gym, a workout space. Um, there's also classroom space upstairs in the back, there's some office space, things like that. Uh, there's a concession and a lobby area, there still will be uh bathrooms and um locker rooms, et cetera.
And a classroom for the teen program, right?
Yeah, most of this is organized around teen teen programs, yes, for sure. Yeah, Romel spoke very eloquently about the need for the space in GIA for teen program and uh and what they're envisioning here, that they just can't accommodate in the existing building anymore, it just doesn't fit. And let's see what else we've got, uh, the elevations are a little hard to read, so I can kind of skip over those unless anybody's particularly interested. Back to them, and then this one, I don't know if you can zoom in on a little bit, I was trying to illustrate here, the um, the blue line down the middle. Maybe it's perfect, just go a little bit there, is that what the property line is, if you're looking from Court Street back towards the buildings. And on the right would be the city's property, and on the left would be the school district's property. Again, most of, all of the stuff that the city needs to do there is underground, it's a water service, it's telecommunications for the building, things like that. There's a little bit of a footer for the foundation of the new exterior wall that would stick in, but it would be down, you know, four four feet below the ground. Once we're done, we would re-establish the grass and the gardens and everything. Once we're done, we would reestablish the grass and the gardens and everything else goes back in there. So we put it back the way we found it or better. And then we just have the formal maps, which I think were attached to your resolution and the easement agreements, so the shaded spaces are the places that we would swap. And then the last drawing is the 20-foot temporary easement. So for approximately a year's time, next year, we'd need that space for construction purposes.
So, Tim, thank you and I'll see you for board colleagues have questions in a second. I think I just want to highlight what Karen was asking when we had a conversation with Travis Book, Travis Brooks and Romel Mack, as well as Dr. Leslin McLean-Clairborn. And I do want to say, it feels good to say, Dr. Leslin McLean-Clairborn. That's, the space currently at GAC for the teen program is in a single classroom. What this does is allow GAC to be able to move the entire teen program to a new space, as you were indicating with, a variety of programs. And as Dr. McLean-Clairborn also said, that would then also open up additional classroom space and the current GAC building to provide additional care that we have not been able to space because of COVID restrictions and spacing. So not only would the new project be able to provide space for teens, which Romel spoke eloquently about as being a neglected population in our community, to provide care, things for folks to do, et cetera, it would also be able to open up a variety of space there. Dr. Tripp did a great point, this is, would be a subterranean or subsurface. I keep forgetting what language the architects use, right? But a subsurface swap. So after the project is complete, the GX, the BJM space would go back to exactly as it is currently. So the school district has the authority to swap land of equal value. If the board so chooses, we could make the swap. I do know one other item that, for me, was important to hear at the meeting at the Beverly J. Martin Cafeteria, was that when they were originally, when the city and GAC were looking to engage this project, it was before the pandemic and it was roughly about 1.5 million, if I'm not mistaken, just over $1 million of what they were planning for. As we know, as a district with our own capital project and the expense of things rising exponentially, it's now looking to be roughly about a $3 million project, if not more, maybe even a $4 million project. And I know the city and Dr. Clairborn, Dr. McLean-Clairborn are worried about further waiting would make the project financially unattainable. That is not said to sway my fellow board colleagues in any way. That's just sharing information that we heard, that we can appreciate because we're watching, and again, with our own projects, understanding the continual increase of costs as well. So that's where we find ourselves, questions from board colleagues? Something we've been looking at and talking about for some time?
You know, what we should also say is that there were a number of people at the public information meeting at BJM and no one had any negative comment. There were no negative comments, there were no anti sentiments at this point with this new reworking of this project.
Everyone there was trying to find a way to make it work.
Absolutely.
I think they said that, you know, almost repeatedly.
Including the teachers who were going to lose a little bit of space in gardening and everyone who was there, stakeholder.
Absolutely. And thank you to our ICSD communication team that put together a great four-page handout, five-page handout that folks can still see online as well, that also gives further additional information. Well, if there's no questions for Tim, I'll make the whole thing and say, can we call the question? All in favor? We absolutely did. My apologies. Thank you, Chris, for catching me. I'll entertain motions.
I'll move 10.2, GAC and Ithaca, 10.2, GAC and City of Ithaca land easement. Do I have to read the entire?
I think you say, you can say as read.
As read.
Second.
Moved by Chris Malcolm, seconded by Dr. Pat Wallace. My sincere apologies. Are there additional questions? If not, then now I will entertain the, or we'll call the question. All those in favor? That is unanimous and I can't see, that includes Aaron as well.
Yeah, that's a thumb up. Addition body, thumb up.
Right.
That's just perfect for Halloween.
Well, with that, that is our agenda. We find on the agenda other dates of importance. Next week will be Policy and Human Resources, our committee meetings. And if there's no other, State Convention this weekend, right? NISBA State Convention in Syracuse this weekend. And so with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Tim, thank you very much.